All right, my computer clock reads October 25th of 2022 at 1:30 PM. We are now going to hold an executive session for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding the following: pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorney under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code and Personnel Matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. So at this time, we are in recess to executive session. And following executive session, we will now reconvene in open session in City Council chambers, which is where we are now. And at this time, I would ask you all to rise and remain standing for our prayer and then our pledge. And our prayer today will be brought by Minister Jinx White with One Accord Fellowship Church.
Father God, we come to your throne of grace with grateful hearts for the blessings that you bestow upon us every day. I come, Father, to pray for this council, that you might give it insight and discernment and to the issues and situations that they will deal with today, that all that they do will honor and glorify you in their leadership and service to this community. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Would you please remain standing and join us in the pledge to the United States and Texas flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we have no citizen comments, so we will move on Agenda Item 3 and move on to the minutes, which is Agenda Item 4.1. That's August 24th of 2022, special city council meeting, LITA, as well as the September 27th regular city council meeting. If I could have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. All in favor of approval of those minutes under 4.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Our approval of those minutes carries 7-0. All right, council will now take up the consent agenda. The consent agenda is Items 5.1 through 5.22. As there are no pulls from this agenda, I would ask if there's a motion to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.22.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, Dr. Wilson, all in favor of approval of consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.22, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like sign. We are now moving on towards our regular agenda. We will have Items 6.1, 6.2, then we have four public hearings. Mr. Massengill?
May I make a motion on Items 6.1 and 6.2 to postpone to our November 16th meeting?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of moving Agenda Items 6.1 and 6.2 to our November 16th, 2022 regular city council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Our motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. All right, next, we will move to Agenda Item 6.3. This is a public hearing to consider requests for a zone case, Seventeen Services LLC for Edge Concepts for a zone change from Central Business District CB3 and Garden Office to Garden Office at 4511 through 4531 114th Street. We will take each of these items up individually. So at this time, I will open up Agenda Item 6.3 for a public hearing. For purposes of this hearing, the purpose of this is to hear from the applicant or members of the public. The council may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion will be had during the public hearing. If there is anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 6.3, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, if there is anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item All right, the public hearing is now closed on Agenda Item 6.3. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, is there a second? All right, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on Agenda Item 6.3? Is there anyone here for questions from Seventeen Services for Edge Concepts? All right, seeing no discussion, all in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. Motion carries 7-0. All right, we will now next move to 6.4. This is a request for zone case 2995-GG-RSDGP LLC for Endeavor Enterprises, a zone change from local retail district C2 to commercial C4. At this time, I will open up the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.4. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 6.4, you may come forward now. All right, seeing none, I will next move to anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.4, you may step forward now. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.4. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.4?
Ms. Pipper? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on Agenda Item 6.4? Ms. Joy?
Yes, and I'm not sure, is anyone here on that case and just not speaking? Ah, there he is. Yeah, got it.
How are you, everyone? My name is Levi Bryan, 521 North Texas Avenue, Odessa, here representing Red Sky Holdings, making the application for this rezone.
As I understand, you're asking in this from a change from C2 to C4 because you have a handout window, is that correct?
That's correct. C2 does not allow a drive-through window. This is a coffee shop that does have a drive-through window, and that's why we are requesting from C2 to C4.
I don't think that's correct. C2 does allow for a drive-through window, but you have to go to ZBA. You're saying no?
No, ma'am.
Our codes are wrong?
C2 allows a drive-through window when there is indoor seating. If there is no indoor seating, like a Dutch Brothers', you require the C4.
Well, as I read it, it says permit any business the use of an accessory pass-out window and/or delivery to customers while still in their motor vehicle. That's what the code says.
Yes, ma'am. Under conditional uses, that is for any use other than a restaurant, pharmacy, bank, package store, or dry cleaners.
And this is not a restaurant?
It is, it's still considered a restaurant even though it's a coffee shop.
Well, and more interestingly enough, in C4, it says the same thing, permit any, in any business, the use of an accessory pass-out window and/or delivery to customers while still in their motor vehicle. So C2, C3, C4, also the same thing. You're just telling me, well, it's a restaurant. Well, it's not a restaurant because it doesn't have any indoor seating, and it's a coffee shop. So I think we're splitting hairs here, and setting that aside, it's in the middle of the block. We do not do that. C4s, we usually put on the corners, and then that leaves the rest of the block with less onerous uses. C4, you can put a lot of stuff that is very objectionable, and you've got residential right behind you. So I can't support this. This is, this is the way we get into trouble when we put C4s in the middle of a block. We see it all the time. Unfortunately, the people that get notice sometimes don't understand. And I also have a problem that if we're going to consider a coffee shop as a restaurant, then that needs to be spelled out, or we need to put a provision for coffee shops, because it is extremely misleading. And if they can go to ZBA and get an outdoor, I'm going to hand you your coffee out the window, this is probably a Dutch Brothers' or something similar. I don't know if it's Dutch Brothers', but it sounds like it.
It's a similar use. It's a Red Sky, I mean, a Seven Brew Coffee Shop. I think they're kind of new. We have another location coming in off of University, sort of across from the campus, and we'll have another one coming in off of Slide, so.
Okay. So I think they do need to go to ZBA and get a specific use in order to do that, because there's no definition in this code that tells me they're a restaurant.
Dr. Wilson?
Ms. Sager, haven't we recently, in the last couple of months, approved like two others that are exactly like this, where we had the same conversation with them, requiring C4 with the no seating?
Very similar. We had one near 82nd and Indiana. I think they ultimately chose to go back and rezone to C3 and then go to the zoning board of adjustment for the conditional use. The one on University, those are very recent ones.
I just remember multiple cases where we've already talked about this. I don't see any problem with this. It's a major arterial road. This isn't going to change flow of traffic. You put a C2, C3, C4, the entrance exit is going to be the same off of Milwaukee, no matter what. I don't have any problem with this in my district.
Well...
Mr. McBrayer?
How is a restaurant defined?
I don't know that we have a specific definition in our code. There very well may be one, but really, any type of food service is a restaurant.
And when you say...
Unless it's...
I mean, is there a distinction between food and drink?
Say again, I'm sorry?
Is there a distinction between food and drink?
No.
Okay.
And to clarify that a little bit, probably the only separate type of food service would be prepackaged, such as a grocery store, a convenience store. A convenience store is a grocery store in our current zoning code. So a restaurant, anyone that's preparing and serving, whether it's only drinks or food and drink, is considered a restaurant.
Okay.
Unless it's a bar, and then we're getting into the weeds, so.
Well, I mean, I sort of did share a little bit of Councilwoman Joy's thought that if there's no seating, it doesn't seem like a restaurant to me, even though they are serving a drink item, but no food item. So I don't know, maybe that's part of the issue here. And I share a little bit of a concern with the C4, but I don't think it's a major problem. But maybe that's an issue we can address some other way to tighten that up with a definition,
Ms. Joy?
Well, if you've been through enough sun cases, you'll find out real quickly what C4 in the middle of a block does, and you can sit there and say, well, I don't see any traffic problem. That's not the issue. It is a C4 use, and I can read to you what the C4 uses are. Some of which are not exactly what you would want in that block, automobile body shops, transmission shops, automobile and recreational vehicle sales, moving on to some of the others that are, a bus station, for example, a hot tamale plant, lumberyard, motorcycle shop. And once you make it C4, the only way it changes is if somebody comes back and asks for it to be changed. But, but when you're doing planning, you are setting yourself up for some problems when you put C4 in the middle of a block. They belong on the retail corner. The other thing that I thought was interesting is you're not using much of the property you're asking to be rezoned for that facility, correct?
That is correct.
So what are you going to do with the rest of it?
The, the rest of it is currently the Chinese Kitchen to the south of us, but I believe that that whole property is owned by one owner, developer, and so we actually have a lease agreement with that Chinese Kitchen for like the access to Milwaukee and some agreements such as that. But because we are not plating this into two different lots and it's being owned by the same person, we're having to rezone that whole lot and block right there.
Is that the person who objected to the zone change?
I'm not aware if that is the same person.
Do you know who the person was that objected to it?
And we do have a map, if you would like to see it, showing the property that objected, as well as an aerial and the adjacent zoning.
Oh, we have those in our backup. I've seen those.
I'd like to see it.
Here. Yeah. Right there. Now, you can scroll that way, the other way. Yeah.
Let me see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The objection is from the residential that's...
Correct. And I believe they didn't specify any reasons or comments when they sent in the objection letter.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? Is there any further discussion? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'm just trying to pull up the objection.
Mr. McBrayer, you have another question?
So back to Councilwoman Joy's first thought, you could stay C2 and just ask for a variance, right?
So my interpretation of the code is you could not, because restaurants are, they're treated a little bit differently in our code. And you have a use that says restaurant business permitted outside the building, which has been interpreted as a restaurant with no indoor seating whatsoever. So that's its own individual use. That is a conditional use in C3 and a permitted use in C4. So the conditional use in C2 that allows other types of businesses to have a drive-through window, I do not think would apply in this situation.
But it's because we would classify this as a restaurant?
Correct.
If we didn't classify it as a restaurant, that would not apply then, right?
Correct, yes.
And there's no definition for a restaurant?
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I have a question. Would you help me in pinpointing the location for the Chinese Kitchen? Is that what?
Yes, if we could have our communications and marketing team pull up the aerial. The existing Chinese Kitchen restaurant is on the south portion of this tract of land. It is plotted as one tract of land. The northern part is vacant, and then the southern part is the existing Chinese Kitchen.
Any other questions, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yes, and that citizen who opposed is right to the north of that cul-de-sac, am I correct?
Yeah. Right at the end of that cul-de-sac. Ms. Joy, we do have a definition for restaurant in our code. I'm pulling it up. I, I was wrong. I'm pulling it up right now. A place where the primary business is the preparation and sale on the premise of food to members of the general public and providing kitchen facilities separate and apart from the area of the premises devoted to the public dining, and which may or may not provide live entertainment to patrons of the premises. Public dancing shall be allowed on premises only upon the granting of a special exception by the ZBA as provided in this code. And then we have separate definitions for a restaurant, kitchen facility, restaurant with accessory pass-out window, restaurant with outside dining area patio, restaurant with the sale of alcoholic beverages, a few.
Why don't they just go down, but leave it at C2 and just go there?
Yes, if we interpret it as not a restaurant, yes, they'd be allowed to do the conditional use in the C2 district.
Now that you've read that, did you agree with me? It's not a restaurant? There's not a separate kitchen? They don't prepare food? I know what they do.
Right, right.
They have some things you can eat, but they don't cook them there.
Right.
Well, rather than putting Ms. Sager in a legal, giving a legal dissertation, let's ask if there's any further discussion. Ms. Patterson-Harris, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you, he answered, I'm sorry.
All right. Mr. McBrayer, do you have one more question?
Does that definition say consumption on the premises?
Yes.
So this is not, there's no consumption on the premises here?
That is correct.
So, I don't know why we need to go through the process of changing the zoning on this.
So it does say the preparation and sale on the premise, not the consumption on the premise.
Okay.
So where the preparation and sale of the food is occurring on premise, it does not say anything about consumption on premise.
Preparation and sale on premise, okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second on approval of Agenda Item 6.4. All in favor of approving Agenda Item 6.4, excuse me, am I 6.4? Yes, 6.4, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries 4 to 3. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.5. And I will now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.5. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to Agenda Item 6.5, you may come forward now. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.5, please step forward now.
Good afternoon. My name is Will Stevens. I'm with AMD Engineering at 6515 68th Street. We're representing South Plains Electric Co-op on this zone change. Just so y'all are aware of their plans, they currently have a substation and a stack yard on this property. It's currently zoned R1. They're wanting to build a warehouse with a conference center to host meetings and events like that for their staff and employees. So other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
All right, you might stick around, Will.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of Agenda Item 6.5? All right, seeing no further persons wishing to speak, I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.5?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McBrayer. I have a motion and a second. All right, at this time, I would open up the floor for discussion of Agenda Item 6.5. And I believe we have Mr. Stevens available, as well as Ms. Sager. Ms. Joy?
Okay. Mr. Stevens, this is an interesting piece of property.
Yes, ma'am.
I had not heard conference center until you said that.
Yeah, they have a site plan here. I don't know if you want to look at it, so you can see...
Is it in our backup?
It's been fleshed out since we originally submitted the case.
Yeah, this is a 10-acre, 10-plus acre piece of land, and it's in a really, kind of, where it is, is, it's between 32nd and 34th.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Alcove and Yuma, which a lot of people probably have never heard of it. And it's, right now, to the north, you've got some use on it that shows to be commercial. I don't think it is...
I think the city of Lubbock owns property to the north of us. I know the property northwest of us is C4, I believe. Yeah, so I know the property where that, can y'all see the zoning map on the screen? So I know the property east of where it says "commercial" in red, I know that that is owned by the city of Lubbock. I don't know what its purpose or use is. And then you have C4 to the north and south of us, on the other side of 32nd, and then you have, I believe that's M1, south of us.
Yeah, the, the future land use plan has it as, as low-density residential. And, you know, our backup says it's in moderate conformance. I guess the part that I found most interesting is 32nd Street is a two-lane, undivided, not paved, and Yuma is a two-lane, undivided, paved.
Right.
And the comment was, it may need additional public improvements to support the intensity abuses.
And we are on the site plan...
And that's my next question. Are you going to do that?
Right, we're paving our half of 32nd Street, and we're going to put in curb return onto Alcove and an asphalt tie-in to Alcove.
Okay, so you're going to pave half of 32nd?
Right up to our property line, yes, ma'am. And dedicate it as a right-of-way. I think right now, it's technically private property, but, yeah, we'll be dedicating that and paving it.
And then on Yuma?
Yuma, I believe, is already, it already has curb and gutter installed, and where the property line is on our property, that's where South Plains, their substation is. So we're not doing any improvements on that side of the property. It's really just kind of in the center where they're putting in this, call it an office warehouse, that's what the code in C4 has, office warehouse.
But you're saying, and your site plan says, is it conference center?
It's got a meeting, I call it conference center. It's got a big meeting room that's got a bunch of tables and like a place where you can serve food and have big meetings.
Well, and I guess what your use is, is immediately to the east, you've got all residential...
Yes, ma'am, across Yuma.
And then going north, and whether we own that piece of property or not, it's R1.
Right.
And so I just don't want us to get some usage in there. And what I heard you say is they're non-conforming right now. They've been using it for a stack lot.
Yeah, right. We're just trying to bring in all the conformance and allow them to build this, like I said, I'm calling it an office warehouse. It's going to have some indoor storage, a meeting hall, meeting room with a lot of tables, and parking lot.
What about outdoor storage?
The plans that I've seen and the conversations that I have, I don't believe it includes outdoor storage. I know there are, or I have seen plans to build a second indoor storage to the east of what we're doing with this current drawing that you're seeing here, but that's not a part of the plans that you... part of the plans that, that you see before you.
Well, under office warehouse, you've got some restrictions. Any adjoining property, you can't have any outside storage.
Yes, ma'am.
It would appear to me that you've got adjoining property that's, that's zoned R1.
Right.
Next to this, so you couldn't have any.
Right.
Is that right, Ms. Sager?
That's correct.
I always hate for people to pave half of a road.
I know.
This is so open out there. When you get out there, you'll see what I mean. There's not a whole lot of, other than these houses, there's not a whole lot out there yet, so. As long as you understand no outside storage.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're going to use it for a warehouse and/or meeting space, I guess.
It is an interesting use, right. Meeting space would be a good way to put it, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's not a conference center.
Interesting.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Stevens, thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion on 6.5? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by like sign? All right, 6.5 carries seven zero. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.6. This is discuss, consider resolution approving an honorary street designation of the portion of Avenue L and Avenue K from the Marsha Sharp, Frontage Road, and 9th Street to also hold the honorary name of Suzanne Acker Avenue.
Move to approve.
Ms. Joy, I have a motion and a second. Before I do that, I'm going to open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 6.5, you may, excuse me, 6.6, you may step forward now. All right, seeing no opposition, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of a motion that's already been first and seconded? Oh, but there we have one.
I don't know if I need to.
Yvonne, come on forward, you're welcome to. Please state your name and...
Sure. My name's Yvonne Rotzke. I'm the artistic director of Valley Lubbock, and I just want to thank you for approving this. It's, it's well-deserved. We're really grateful, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Yvonne. If there's no other parties wishing to speak, then we will close the public hearing for Agenda Item 6.6, and I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving Agenda Item 6.6, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed by like sign? And motion carries seven zero. All right, with that, it is, yeah, if you could just give me one second, Dr. Wilson, I apologize. I just want to bring up one quick thing. I got this really, really beautiful picture of this guy right here. I don't know if he can see it.
Or is he hiding?
He's behind the wall.
He's behind the wall. It's this really, really beautiful picture. Wes, come on out, see, does this look like, it's a, it's a nice-looking picture.
Looks like we took it today.
Well, I'm sure it will when you're gone. After 21 years with the city, Wes will soon be retiring, and tomorrow, I believe Thursday, there will be a little retirement celebration. Thank you, Wes, for your years of service. I greatly appreciate you. When I got here, very welcoming to me and making sure that I knew what I was doing and all the rest of us, so safe travels, well wishes, and that's all I just wanted to tease you about your beautiful picture on the front page.
Remember not touching.
Okay, don't, yes, sir. I don't touch anything. I never do. All right, sorry about that. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to quickly embarrass, I've got two pediatric intern physicians in the audience today. They have now, in their pediatric residency curriculum, asked the residents to come and join us at a council meeting when they're on their community rotation. So Dr. Baxter, Dr. Lyons, if y'all want to just stand up and say hello to everybody, they're here learning about the way we run our city. And I'm happy for them to be here.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here today. Anything else? All right, it is 2:35, and we are adjourned.